Welcome everyone to the April meeting for the Board of Trustees. So, looks like we will have three of us here today. We'll make a forum for our meetings to occur. So, we'll take a quick.
Steve, I messed up.
Roll and we'll be on our way. Okay, Bob?
Present.
Teresa? Teresa, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm present.
Okay, I see ya. Just making it official. And Janey is here.
Yeah, I'm here.
And both Kim and Shawna are.
Out of town.
Out of town. There you go. Thank you. Good thing you had the word I was searching for, because I was searching for "out of town." Yeah, so, and enjoying themselves, which is great. But would like to have been there to see, to just see Kim's response to the, to the total eclipse. I mean, they were right in it, so, great. Okay. So, are there any, we'll approve the agenda first. Are there any questions, additions, deletions, that anyone would like to make to the agenda? All good. Did I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
No.
Teresa, what do you say? Thank you. We're on a limited, yeah, okay. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as written? Say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright. So next is our minutes from, from March. I hope everyone had a chance to read those, so we can go ahead and approve those minutes. And I didn't see anything that needed to be changed, but anyway. So, can I have a motion to approve March's minutes?
I move to approve March's minutes.
May second.
Move in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're all good. Alright. So now then, we are on to our reports for today.
Citizen comments.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Bob. I look right over there. Citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? First of all, I'll have Janey review what the procedure is for citizen comments, and then we'll ask for anybody in the audience for online.
If you'd like to make a citizen comment, if you can raise your hand, and I'll have you fill out the paper over next to the podium. You can make a citizen comment. If you're online, you can raise your hand in the chat, and I will call on you to give us a citizen comment. You have three minutes. Okay, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, nobody online?
Nobody's raised their hand so far. If they do, I'll interrupt you.
Good deal. Alright, thank you. But we're moving on, so they'll have to wait for the. City, they've got the reports next, and that would be the, up first is Mark, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you are aware, because you attended the meeting, there was some discussion about the library funding mechanism in ordinance 119B that we talked about both at the March 19th meeting and again at the city council meeting last evening. And so, one of the things that we'll be doing based on how come with those conversations, bringing back a proposed ordinance change to ordinance 119B. And so, staff's recommendation to not make any changes was rejected by council, and so, we're going to be bringing back language essentially striking paragraph 3A and 3B, completely removing the language, about the 23.28% from the ordinance, and replacing it essentially with a statement that reads, "The city council will annually appropriate a budget for operating the Liberty Lake Library," period. And that will put the library on equal footing with every other department in the city with respect to budget. And so, that's the plan. I wanted to bring that forward this afternoon, get some feedback from the board members as to whether there were any concerns with that plan, or any alternative proposals.
Well, we're missing two people that probably would like to weigh in on this one. Okay, so, maybe I misunderstood last night's conversation. I didn't hear that there was a concern with the percentage that had been in there. It was the language, you know, prior section talking about what you're suggesting in the, in the rewritten ordinance about the council, even though there's a 23%, they have the ability to override that or change it in any way they want during the budgeting process. Isn't that what that was about, that, that comment that Councilman Carville made?
So, the, the discussion was about clarifying a statement that is explicitly clear. And so, our concern is replacing a statement that is subject for interpretation with a different statement that is subject to interpretation. And so, our recommendation is going to be to strip the language out of the ordinance altogether, and just replace it with a straight, "Council shall appropriate money to operate the library."
What, what, what kind of a time period would the Board of Trustees have to, to review the proposed changes and to have, have input on, on the, what would be the timeline?
So, the timeline as it stands now is our plan would be to bring back the first read on, is that April 23rd? April 23rd, and so, between the first and the second read will be a two-week period. And so, at each of the reads, there would be an opportunity to bring forward any comments or ask any questions based on the, the first read, and then, and usually edits occur between the first and the second read. So, if there was a need to edit that or revise it in another way, that would happen between the first and the second read. So, so essentially between now and the 23rd, there would be some time to kind of figure out if that was something that you wanted to do. And then between the 23rd and May 7th, which would be the first and the second read by schedule, another opportunity to formulate any thoughts, potentially bring back to the second read as that process was unfolding.
But, you would, you know, when would we see the proposed language?
So.
Yes, I mean, it's basically what you're saying. The city council will appropriate the, you know, funds for the library operation and.
Right, right. So, we would, we would put a redline version of the agenda packet for the 23rd, and assuming that we were, and typically we distribute that.
On Friday.
On Tuesday, Friday.
We post it on Friday. We typically distribute it in a draft form on, on Wednesday, and so, potentially Wednesday, which will be a week from today.
So, Mark, that would mean, I'm kind of trying to visualize how the budgeting process would go in the future with this revised.
I think for me, it would be the same. It's just before, kind of like, I would punch in this formula and know in the back of my mind, this is about how much money we have, so I'd still do that.
The way, the way I visualize it, and we, we will have to talk to see how you feel managing that goes going forward. The way I would visualize it is that just like any other organization, and this is no different, that each department submits their, their budget request and lists the things that they are basing their budget request on, and then it would be reviewed by the city council. And probably beforehand, the city administrator and the people that oversee that, and then it goes to the city council for approval. Is that kind of a procedure?
Yeah, and, and as you described, there are multiple filters that happen between an initial draft of a budget and its adoption. But practically speaking, the budget process, the budget making for the library would not change at all. There would be no difference in process or practice.
Got it. Teresa, do you have any questions for Mark?
Uh, no, I was just thinking about this timeline. So, if it's, if the redline comes out with the agenda draft next week, we don't meet again until, is it May 10th? Janey, I'm looking at the calendar.
Yeah.
May 8th, sorry. So, there would be a first and second read before we even meet again as a board to, like, because Brad, you had mentioned discussing their proposal, but I don't know if we really need to, or if we have time for that.
Well, we would have to call, if, if we felt it necessary, we would have to call for.
Yeah, it'd be like a special meeting.
Correct. If we felt it was necessary. And I think we'd have to allow the other two members who are not here today a chance to, they, to see and hear that, and to see if they feel a need, there is a need for a special meeting to, to review and discuss the proposed change.
So, so what I'm seeing, Mark, is so, we're just taking out, you're, you're basically going to recommend taking out 3A and 3B, which talk about the 50 cents per thousand, and the 3% administrative overhead, and the 23.28.
Correct.
And you're just gonna create a new paragraph, whatever, renumber them, so, you know, A, you know, new paragraph, A, that just says the city will provide the funding the operation, and we'll.
Correct.
And, and that language is, so, so in other words, what we would be doing is we would be taking that section back to ordinance 119 in its origin. So, so ordinance 119 said exactly what we're proposing to say again.
When it was originally written, that's what it proposed.
Correct. And then the changes were made when the economic downturn in 2008, I believe, 2012 is when it was, and it may have been in response to that, but it was only was updated in 2012, and probably the 23.28% language.
But, yeah, just correct me if I'm wrong, I think the discussion, because I wasn't, I was out of town when those meetings were going on, is the 23.8 was basically just four.
There's some debate about whether.
Whether it was a four or a ceiling.
Four, ceiling, and also the argument, if I remember correctly, was about, you know, whether it's taxes collected, or taxes assessed, or whatever, so, I mean, unless the other, unless the other two members of the board have other comments, I don't, I don't think there's a lot, you know, to, you know, fall on the sword of.
Yeah, I wouldn't agree with that.
If it puts us on a.
I agree, Bob.
You know, meant to just put us on this, you know, the same footing as all the other departments, which it does, because no other department had a particular percentage of, you know, property taxes collected, then, then I don't see that it's an issue.
Well, and, and you may or may not remember this, in, in a couple of previous conversations where we've talked about this, you, you've asked me a question, and my response had been, "If I was building ordinance from the ground up, I would not earmark funds." That, that just isn't great practice. I understand what you did, but I would not do that if I was building an ordinance from the ground up. We, we chose not to recommend that, because there, we didn't assess there to be a structural problem with the ordinance. But, but now that we're in a position where we are gonna have to bring back language, I, that's the proposal, to, to strip the percentage and cent language out of there, and just put the library on equal footing from a budgetary perspective with every other function in the city. We're just gonna budget based on the need, and try to defend those requests on par with every other request.
Sure.
And if it ends up being more demand, it may end up being more than 23.8, it may end up being less depending on what, what happens at the end of budget.
Right, you'll have that simple, based on programming and every other kind of variable.
So, that, to me, that's reasonable, because that's the way the world operates.
Yeah, I, I agree with Bob. I don't see a, I mean, it's like every other budgeting process in any organization, every department submits their, their budget request, and then they have to defend, if they need to, defend the, the items that they feel are necessary in the budget.
Right.
And then, and that, and then my experience in budgeting has always been that there are always things that you have to go back and revisit. I mean, in a, in a budgetary, budgetary process, so, yeah. Teresa, I, I don't really see a need for us to have a, a separate meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so, I think the three of us can agree that we'll just have an advantage to, to look at the, the proposed, although we already know. And, but, anyway, thank you. You bet. And that's the extent of my report. Got it, thanks. Okay, so, next is Friends of the Liberty Lake Municipal Library. But Bob wasn't there last meeting, I wasn't there. So, Janey, you are our Friends of the Library reporter today.
I feel like.
Can you do that?
I feel a little bad, because I was there for the second half of the meeting.
Well.
They talked about advertising the soiree and the book sale, period.
Yeah, the only other thing that was different was Kim had mentioned, when she came back from the last meeting, that they had requested that we give our quarterly reports to the Friends, just like we do for the council. So, I did do that.
Oh, good.
At the meeting on, on, at the Thursday meeting. And then, yeah, I know, they were discussing the soiree and the book sale.
Right.
Um, the library's doing really well with books right now. On Monday, we got 16 boxes of books donated. So, I think they're gonna be in really good shape for the book sale. Yeah.
We are in excellent shape for the book sale. Got a bunch of children's books.
Yes.
The mother, yeah. That's great. You got a new card to roll all those things around.
Yes.
Yeah, and just, Janey, one of the, one of the neighbors on my street texted me yesterday, wanted to know how cheap to get books to the book sale. And in the past, she's brought them off, and nobody said anything to her, and so I said, "Well, look, I'll take them." And she ended up taking them over anyway, and she was raving about how, she said, "This is the first time I've delivered books for the book sale," and two people just thanked me profusely. She didn't get their name, but she just was so pleased that she had gone over herself instead of just giving them to me.
Yeah.
Kudos to whoever. Kudos to whoever, you know, thanked her and, and, you know, helped her with it.
That's great. Okay, so, then we're on to the city council, and Shawna was not here to attend that. Mark's already, already addressed one part of it that, that affects the library, and the other part is that the, our, our agenda item for approval of our.
The public comment.
Thank you, of course, the public comment policy was approved by the board last night as well. And that's about all that affected us in terms of council action last night. Did I miss anything?
No, so I will be updating the website today with the new version of the policy.
Okay, great. The only other thing I think that might affect the library is the reconstruction of the website. Can you, and, and I know, I know you were a part of that, how, how will that help our patrons in, in accessing information about the library?
So, that's a good idea. I think next meeting, I'll, I'll give you guys the demo, and share my screen so you can see it. But Michaela has been working extensively with David on the project. She's been coming to me with little bits and pieces of it, but she's been doing the main stuff with it. One thing that we're super excited about is on the city website, there's the search bar, search her stuff within the city website. Ours is going to be specific to the library, so you'll search it, and it will take you to our catalog for books. So, that's something that people have been confused by in the past, is that they're trying to search books, and it searches like the city's webpage, and doesn't give them anything. So, that's an upgrade. The background is really beautiful. It's like a blue lake scene, and it looks very similar to our library part, how we have like the, you know, Cortland Lake on there. For us, it's, might supposed to be Liberty Lake, it's Cortland. So, that's really beautiful. We're reconfiguring a lot of our buttons to be main things that people look for, so like consumer reports is something that patients are always looking for. Stuff for the reserve a meeting room is gonna be a button that you can click right on the front page, and then stuff for Libby, our app for books, databases, and my account. Another thing that David is working on is very, very top of the screen, it says, in tiny letters, but it says like right at the top, where you would think on a website to sign in, to order something, it says, "Website sign in." And our patrons always think that's where they're supposed to sign into their account, but it actually city staff sign in to change the website. So, I kid you not, we get questions about this daily. And we have to tell them, "No, I'm sorry, that's for like staff, it's not for you." And it was really funny, because me and Michaela were discussing this, and then a patron came up to the desk and was like, "I can't sign into my account," and they're talking to the clerk, and she's like, "Oh, yeah, that's the website sign in." So, they're changing that to be a button on the bottom, that like hidden, so that our patrons won't get confused about that. So, it's like a silly little thing, but it's like impacts us daily. So, we're really excited about it. And yeah, next month, when we get, when I get my report, I'll just share my screen and show you guys the highlights of it. Because just aesthetically also, it's just, it's pretty, and looks, so, we're excited.
Is it, is it still gonna be a sub-series of pages on the city's website?
So.
Can you get to it directly?
So, the thing that I think some people don't know is we have a, have a, a redirect. So, if you type in libertylakelibrary.com, it takes you to our website. So, that's like a domain that we purchased several years ago, but yeah, it's like, if you were to go on the city's page, it'd be like libertylakelaw.gov/435library. So, it will still function.
So, it's still, you know, functionally part of that.
Function, yeah.
You can get the.
Yes, but we'll have our library button, and obviously, when you Google us, Liberty Lake Library, it's the first thing that comes up. But yeah, so, I just feel like with our upgrades, our page has gotten better and better, which is nice.
Great. Well, you're still on, because now it's your turn. As the library director, can you give us your report?
So, the stuff I have to talk to you guys about is later in the agenda. So, I just have a few things as far as my report. The first thing that most everyone knows is we submitted the Library Capital Improvement Grant on Thursday. Submitted to the state. They have until September to review the applications. And then, in September, I guess, some kind of report will be published that basically has a list of libraries that will potentially be funded. But since it's like state-funded, the state does have to go through the budget process in January through March-ish. So, it's one of those things where we aren't gonna know 100% for sure for a while. Some, I had read somewhere, or heard somewhere, that I thought it was like June or July, but it is kind of more of a, a long process with this.
So, in September, we'll know, we're on the list for consideration.
Yes.
In the budgeting process.
Yes.
Got it.
So, and it's one of those things where they said, kind of like, "These are the ones we intend to fund, but if something goes astray in the state capital budget, like, people, you might not get your money." So, yeah, so it's something that we'll hear about in September.
Well, thank you for putting the effort into making that happen. That's a lot of work right out of your grant.
Yes. Mark was extremely helpful, and had many meetings with me about it, and gave me some help with that. And then Michaela also helped me a great deal in writing some of the answers to some of the questions and stuff. So, it was, it was a great effort.
Roger.
And yes, it was very helpful, being my first grant, to have some extra hands helping. The other thing I had is I'm working on my, the state, Washington State Library statistical report. So, that's due on Friday. So, it's my intent at our next meeting also to give you a report on all of our 20, 23 databases. And then, at our next, you know, at that meeting, we'll go through it. Then we can discuss who's gonna give the presentation with me to council in June, and maybe talk about some of the numbers that we think would be more into highlight for the city council. And just get your feedback on things that you think that should be included in that report.
So, Janey, do you know how the state uses those stats that you provide to them, and every other library in the state provides them? How, how do they use those stats?
One of the ways is just with getting national funding through like LSTA thing to the federal government. That's one way that they use it. It's also just something that they use with tracking and kind of telling these, telling the story to the community about how important libraries are, and that sort of thing. And then, but yes, it does help a lot with like broadband, broadband and grants, and funding through the Institute of Museums and Libraries and that sort of thing. So, I think part of it is just so we know where we are, and then other parts are for funding and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I'm working on getting that done this week as well. One of our longtime substitutes, Carol McKinney. She was a substitute for us here at the library for 12 years, and she volunteered for us probably for four years prior to that. So, she's been with us for about 16 years. She retired from being a library sub on Saturday, so that was her last day. We're very sorry to lose her, but happy for her to do some world traveling and be recovered for real. We do actually already have a new substitute lined up. She has been a volunteer for us for probably, I think, four years now. We do have to like redo the background check and that sort of thing. We don't anticipate having any issues, but we're, we're basically immediately filling that position, so that's really nice, just because since we are a public-facing entity, when things happen, like we need people on the front desk, if, you know, people are out of town and that sort of thing. So, we do really need our substitutes, so, we're happy to get that filled again. We're still working on the Master Gardener series at the library. We just have our next session on Saturday, April 6th. And I think we had 14 people attend, which we thought was really great, since it was technically spring break. We do have two more sessions in April, and two more sessions in May on that series, but it so far has been really well-attended. So, we're really happy about that. And we do have our new software for our library calendar and meeting room software. Mark has signed the agreement with them, so now we're just waiting for the tech support to come through and get us logged into the software and that sort of thing. But it'll be nice to have that. We're hoping to have it like ready to go May, which will kind of help with having a new city website as well at the same time. The main thing I'm just really excited about is it's automated for the meeting room registration. So, that will be really helpful versus like manual paper registration and all for that. So, that's everything that I had as far as my report.
Oh, do you have any questions for Janey? No. Teresa, do you have any questions for Janey?
No, no questions.
Okay, great. Alright. And the first item up on our business is bills recently passed at the state legislature, and how it might affect us, and that. And that Valdez, Valdez bill. And Jenny, I'll, I'll refer to you again.
So this bill has been in the legislature I think for a couple of cycles, but it finally passed. It won't go into effect until June, so we do still have some time. It's Senate Bill 5444, it's the Valdez bill. It prohibits firearms from public spaces that includes libraries. I had a meeting with some other state library directors about this last week. Some takeaways that I had, they just like went into that form of bill is that it's not just firearms, it is weapons with intent to cause harm. So it could be things like a baseball bat. And that sort of thing. Concealed carry is still permitted because it's concealed. For a library to be in compliance, all that is required is this, is that we have signage posted somewhere in the library. Oops, I need to plug in my laptop. I normally do that before the meetings. Okay, now we're safe. All that is required for us to be compliant is to have some signage posted somewhere that says that basically under RCW XYZ, no firearms are permitted on the premises. So that's all, that's like the big thing that we have to do. It's, let's see, what was it?
In our policies, we might have to revisit just referring to that RCW, correct?
Yes, so that's where I was, that's where I was going is to pull up our patron privacy policy or patron behavior policy. And showing you some places where we have this kind of thing referenced. And just getting your feedback on if you want to include the RCW specifically or interpret our policy as already in compliance.
You're going to pull that up on the screen?
Yes. Come on, you can do it. Okay, so this is our patron behavior policy. It was last updated in 2020. Some things that we already referenced is let's see. Avoid disruptive behaviors that endanger the perpetrators or others interfering with library business or other patrons or staff or is illegal. Now it will be illegal for you to have a firearm in the library. So that's one spot that kind of references it. At the very end of this first paragraph, it says comply with all, oh, just highlighted everything. Comply with all federal, state or local laws. This will now be a state law. So we do reference, you know, state law there. Destructive prohibited, destructive behaviors that are prohibited in the library. Number one, engaging or attempt, or attempting to engage in any activity that would be a violation of any federal, state or local criminal law statute or ordinance. So we are covered under there. This next section is about pandemic. Let's see.
Number four is about brandishing.
Brandishing a weapon, assaulting a staff or library patron. Let's see, language, threatening or harassing behavior, physical, verbal, sexual, hostile environment. So it's one of those things where I do feel like a lot of our policies cover these behaviors. So it's one of those things where we could leave the policy as is. If we were to change something, I think it would be something where we do align similar to this number 15, where it references specifically RCW and then include the new RCW and maybe put that where it says, you know, federal, state or local law. Or maybe under the brandishing a weapon, having that RCW reference. So it's one of those things where I think we're covered, but I wanted your guidance and your preferences on what you feel like you want to do with this. If we do want to make a change, it's obviously, I think, very straightforward and easy. But it's just something that I want to get going on since we do have a June deadline. But I think we would still be okay if for some reason we didn't make the June deadline.
I like the idea of adding in the art, the new RCW reference references. We could add it to the agenda for the May 8th meeting to review updating. Do you think that's enough time?
Yeah, I, did you say that again, Teresa?
Oh, I was just saying I agree with adding the new RCW reference points in there. Would the May 8th meeting allow us to look at the red line version of this?
Yeah, I could definitely bring it back for the May meeting for us to vote on.
Thought is, I mean, the, the problem I see with referencing it as, as an RCW. And we only reference one and it's in, you know, finding, you know, we reference the one that defines what a service animal is. It's not like we've referenced every law that relates to. So I wonder if we're, you know, kind of opening ourselves up to saying, okay, why did we only do, you know, 5444? And not do, you know, anything else that pertains to a library. I just, it, it seems like we're, we're putting it in there when we're already covered, this kind of way. And because, and then if we have to put that one in there, then do we have to put other ones in there that refer to something other than, you know, service animals? Do we have to, you know, if there's an RCW defining what is a, you know, what is a handicap or a limitation of ability? You, you start piling on almost your blanket. I mean, Shauna and or Sean would probably be, you know, better at identifying this, but I think you're you're adding enough information that's already covered by such applies all federal, state, local law. That's just one of them.
Mark, could I ask a question? Would you be willing to ask, answer a question regarding this? Sure, yeah. So I have a question about liability for the city. Since it's a, a new law that has just been passed. Would it, would, would I mean, in terms of liability, would it be important for us to reference the RCW in our policies? Um, we can, we can certainly ask that question by our risk management firm to find out if they have any comment on that or guidance on that. With respect to the policy, the, the policy typically there are no, there's no better or worse way to do it. If, if the standard practice is to reference an RCW that has been explicitly called out something that you now by policy are either allowing or pivoting or, or limiting in some way. Not a bad practice to put it in, it's often not required. We're talking about the signage. Jenny and I specifically had a conversation around the signage. The signage, in my opinion, needs to reference the RCW. But the policy itself, I, I think it's just a matter of precedent and how you typically handle policy language in other areas. But we can certainly put that question to our risk managers and find out if there's a liability impact either way. And we haven't done that yet. Okay?
I think my perspective would be our policies are generally what our expectations are for our patrons and what our expectations are kind of for our. So with this new law, I don't, we're not changing any expectations for our patrons. In that we're still expecting them to behave in this manner, X, Y, Z. Like follow state laws. This is a state law. So from I don't feel like it's something we need to change in the policy. If you guys feel like you want to reference it, that's fine. And we can also check with risk management.
Well, I think Mark kind of answered it for me. In fact, if it's, I know in public schools and public areas, they all, I mean, if there's an RCW or anything like that, it's, it's signage. And the signage is up in a, in a gymnasium, like no smoking or whatever, or in a public space. Again, with weapons, it's, it's a signage as you walk into the door of every public school. So I, I think, in my opinion, it's referenced in our policy already several places. And I think if it's posted in the library and the reference to the RCW is, is made in that, that signage, I think we're good. I don't need to change. This is my personal opinion. I'll go along with everybody else on the, on the board. But my first opinion is I don't think we have to change anything in the way the policy is written down.
I, I. Go ahead, Teresa.
No, I was just, I was just changing what I said, my suggestion earlier, just thinking about what Bob stated. How we don't have every RCW listed in this policy. And then this is best practice, but having the RCW listed on the signage is perfect. Cause at least it's addressed specifically there.
Yeah, I would agree. And our policy always already says in accordance with all state, federal laws. Well, it also says comply with directions. I, I, I interpreted directions to be verbal and or posted.
Yes.
Right, so I agree. I don't, I don't think we go through the hoops to change the policy. I agree. In my perspective, I would agree with that.
So Mark, I's next step is just that we're going to meet with the chief and go through this. Get him updated on this new law and also discuss like what, if there's any next steps on if we had an issue with the be the, we would need to follow.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Jenny. All right. So you also would like us to discuss the library of things waivers. Cause that was something brought up in your.
Yes, so I monthly meet with CIN, which are the other libraries in our consortium. As libraries are getting more library of things items. We're working with those libraries to develop a waiver for each library. Just since we pass items in between via the courier. So currently the only waiver that we have is one that relates specifically to our laptops and hotspots. We drafted this and I think it may have been before either of you guys were on the board. I don't think, I think it may have been before Brad, which would mean that it was before Bob and Teresa. Sorry, I'm just trying to find it. I had it pulled up. Here it is. Okay. So I just wanted to show you what we have. So we created this waiver that patrons sign before they check out a laptop. Just because, you know, a laptop is a more expensive $1,500 item. So this is what they sign. It gives their information. You have to be over 18. Basically, if you check out this laptop and drop it and it breaks pieces, you're going to be charged $1,500. So this is the only kind of waiver that we have in the library right now. And so they want us to develop a more universal one that's for basically anything expensive. It's one of those things where we don't want to give the idea to like parents specifically like your kid checks out a Lego kit and then loses one of the Legos, like we're not going to charge you for the Lego kit. This is for expensive things like a laptop or film equipment or podcasting equipment. Those more expensive items that if something that was clearly their fault, they would be charged for. So they want us to develop a new waiver. A couple waivers that I found were from other libraries that have already created them here in the system and I wanted to show you them. I have ones that I like better than others, but I wanted to get your opinion on this as well. Sorry, I sent it, I opened that laptop kit and then I like closed out of the thing that had all the other links in it.
So is this, they want our library to come up with its own waiver for that? Or they want one that is interchangeable with other, with their items that might be, you know, go back and forth between the libraries?
So they want it to be for us specifically that says Liberty Lake in it. Okay, sorry, I found them now. So some of the libraries have a something that's on the website. So this is something that we could do. So this is for the Coeur d'Alene Library. And it has, it'll have a list of all the items that you can check out and then it has this waiver form that they sign. I feel like like this picture is kind of in the way. So it just basically says that the parents, so it's an I or my children who check out these items. There's something like, if you damage it, you're going to be paid, you're going to be charged for it. And for some reason you were injured, you're not going to hold the Coeur d'Alene Library responsible. And then it's like you sign it and date it and submit the agreement. So I think regardless, probably if we were to create something, I would create something that could be filled out in person at the library or something that you could fill out online.
So I'm just thinking that anything we create would have to be, we'd have to run that through our attorney, correct? Correct, yeah.
Yes. So that would be my intent was to find something that the board agrees on. And then we would submit it to Sean also to get his feedback on it.
And I think personally, I think our computer one is cleaner than Coeur d'Alene's. Coeur d'Alene is a lot of legal language, but doesn't really say what did you check out?
Yes, so I'm trying to find the draft one that they had sent also, that I felt like was also a little cleaner. Let me pull that up really quick.
We all know that it's, it's going to be, I mean, if it, if it looks like that one, I'm afraid you're going to, I mean, you're going to get, just like people click through, you know, the terms and conditions of the software, nobody reads it. They're going to sign it and then they're going to say, oh, well, we didn't know what we were signing. You know, because it didn't specify they have a laptop of wifi, you know, a Lego kit or a Harry Potter magic kit or whatever. And some of the things that I thought that Coeur d'Alene had was like the, you know, printing robot, they had games, they had, you know, projectors. Yeah, but they almost went and listed that in every book. You know, that is a compass. So I don't know if it was a compass.
So I found the other one that I, it doesn't include everything that you're talking about, Bob, but I did feel like it was a little bit cleaner looking. So let me share my screen on that one. I guess what I'm kind of looking for is just guidance on what specific, if there are specific things you want included. What specific, there are specific things you want included and kind of the look and feel of it, and then I'll bring back a draft. Next month. Um but this one I felt like was a little bit. Cleaner.
Well, does I I'm trying to weigh in my mind. Shouldn't, the waiver should probably. Our library of things. How extensive, what kinds of things are we thinking of? Because I think that really has a an impact on what people are are signing. You know, if I if I sign out a a uh, let's say, a a skill saw. I take it home and I cut my finger off. That they took out. They can sue us all they want to, but they at least signed the waiver. That recognized they were they were uh taking out a dangerous piece of equipment. So. I I'm not sure, I'm trying to weigh all that in my head as as we look at this.
Yeah, what I mean, what is our list, what are? Yeah, I always heard of the internet as things, not the library thing, but. I mean, how much stuff do we have that has been into that category?
So the only thing that we currently have would be we have laptops that are more expensive. Um and then we have like a little mini projector that's like three hundred dollars. Those would be the two things that we have that are expensive. But I think they're kind of thinking along the lines of you, Bob, is that different libraries in our system have different things. If they check out a skill saw from Court of Lane. And then they cut their finger off. Um so that I think kind of the way that they're going with this is.
If I check out something through CIN. You know, and I'm a Liberty Lake Library patron. Do I sign Court of Lane's waiver?
So that's the idea is that we'll have all of these waivers on the website. So if. Mark orders from Court of Lane's skill saw, he would come in to get the skill saw. We would say, you need to sign this waiver from Court of Lane. That says this is expensive and you could hurt yourself. And then you can check out that.
So the the one who, okay, so now I now I am. So then the, then he's not signing the one we're producing. He's signing the one that they produce.
Yes.
Because it's out of their library.
Yes, but it's like we need to have one too. And currently, all we have is one for a laptop.
Right, so.
So.
As the new library progresses, do you see a a, I'm trying to look at the future too that this waiver would would handle. Do you see us having? A bigger variety of 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 library of things?
Yes.
Okay, and I would agree with that. I mean, so so we would want to come up with a waiver that kind of. Encompasses all the possibilities, I think.
Because those get moved around all over to the hotspots.
Yeah, um Teresa, what did you have to add? Sorry.
Well, that's okay. I was just saying, I think. That's what the appeal of the Court of Lane version of their waiver is, is even though it's not, like Bob, you had mentioned, it's not specific. I think in the vagueness of it, it covers everything from the board game to the skill saw. Um just because it doesn't have to be specific in how it's ordered. But it keeps it so that there isn't the liability.
What whose library is this one from, Jenny?
So this is just a a universal one that they created, that they're like, if you don't have time or. For some of the smaller libraries, they can just print this off and put. Plumber library on the top. So this is their generic one that they created.
When you say they, who?
Well, Michael from Court of Lane, he created this one specifically. Yeah.
I like that one better.
And Jenny, clarify also that the creation of a waiver isn't. Um. There still has to be a policy discussion about what we include in our library.
Yes.
Right, I mean, um it doesn't mean that we're going to provide skills all necessarily, but that that could be one of the things. But the waiver itself really is just indemnifying the city. And and also. Putting the risk of damage or loss or theft on the checker outer. So it protect theoretically protects both parties.
Yeah, so I think in general, this is a little preemptive of a discussion for Liberty Lake. Just because we don't, with our current library, we don't have the space to.
Right.
Expand our library of things collection as much as other libraries have. It's something that we're looking for, looking to do with our new library. And once we have our new library, we would definitely have a discussion on. What kinds of items that we are interested in getting for our community and also. Um like through the Community Engagement Commission, engaging our committee, our community and saying, hey, what kind of things would you like to see in a library of things? It's just, since other people have already gone down the road, we kind of need to go down the road at least a little bit to have. A waiver for um for them and for us.
Yeah, um I like this perhaps just looking while you were talking. Spokane County Library just uses kind of a condensed version. Of this, where they, you know, basically the guidelines for borrowing and use are at the top. And then the agreement is, you know, where you say, I agree to pay full repair. Yeah, so I I would be more, you know, inclined to go along that line where we create one. That is generic, general enough that holds everybody responsible and then one that applies to. We just keep adding to as we go. That makes sense?
Yes.
I I also think that that. Couple things, they're, they they have to accept responsibility in the waiver for whatever item they checked out. But they also have to be able to recognize whether it's a dangerous. Uh item that could potentially dangerous item depending on use. So I think those two things.
We need to have both things written in our policy.
We have to say, we're not gonna teach them how to use it. And we're not gonna show Mark how to use a spill saw. And uh, you know, we're not, we're not responsible. You know, for them following the proper use. We'll make available whatever instructions come with the item. But we're not, you know, responsible.
So can we mail uh part of the Court of Lane?
And Spokane County, you were saying?
I'll send you the link.
Okay.
And we're coming, maybe come back and make with a. A possible.
Yes.
Now that I can get back into the meeting.
And like I said before, we'll also rope Sean in on this, our city attorney, to make sure. That there isn't something that we're missing that he sees.
Alright. Okay, so Bob's gonna send you that and um. The uh we'll work off this one that he's shown and we'll see if we can come up with one that we can. We can be. Um it will be useful for us as we go forward with our. Library of things. Okay. Teresa, any other, anything you might want to add to that discussion on this policy, this new policy?
No, I think we covered it.
Okay.
Bob, we're good?
We're good.
Okay. Alright, so the last thing uh on our agenda for today is the RF RFQ update and. Schedule.
So um. Let me pull up these kind of draft schedule that we have for this. Um basically. So we posted the RFQ March twenty second. Um they.
Have we, have we had any responses yet?
So we've had, um I had a list sent to me of people who have shown that they're interested. In. The project. Um I emailed the host of the website. Before this meeting, um asking him like how I can tell if they're sending proposals or that sort of thing. He asked me to give him a call, so I'm wondering if he's gonna walk me through the website really quick. So I don't know if we've had any proposals yet. Um but basically. What our next steps are, are April nineteenth is when proposals are due. And then our committee members will have um. Two weeks to review all the proposals. Um we have a score sheet that they will build out. Ranking. The proposal and how they feel that they did. We'll take our top. However many, um and we will do interviews. Here at City Hall, where they will give a presentation on their proposal and we will go through the interview questions that we have. And then from that, we'll select our project manager. Um. So that's where we are with the RFQ.
Okay. Any questions for Jenny about the RFQ, Bob? Teresa?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Good thing is, moving forward, be uh be uh be kind of excited and curious to see who and how many. Actually put their proposal in for for that to that uh oversight of the job. That'll be great. Okay. So that is the last item on our agenda. Unless anybody has any other comments or questions. I'll ask one last time for any citizen comments. Um that anyone would like to make.
Yeah, you have three minutes. Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem.
I'm not planning on saying anything, but it was interesting when you were talking about the library loaning things out. And one of the council meetings I referred back, it turned out fifty years ago now. That I was involved with the city, Spokane Library Committee, and they loaned out parts and things like that so clear. What jogged my memory today was the liability. There was an attorney who represented the bank and also represented the city. What happened was that they, at the time, they would loan out toasters, hair dryers. And things of that sort. They started realizing there's a liability. It was like a like a bad, you know, this memory started coming back. What they chose to do at the time is they were gonna look at. Anything that was electrical had to be plugged in, almost before computers, that they would not loan those out. They would loan art and loan things of that sort there, but not electrical because one item came up, was a person checked out a toaster. And the toaster caught fire. And they wanted to sue the city. I don't remember how the outcome of that was, that the liability was. Then the city should have known that there was a possibility that that was affected. So I don't know if they passed that because it was a long period of time. I was working for a bank, I was one of the representatives. But anything that was plugged in, computer would be different. A calculator would be different. But toasters, hair dryers, things of that sort there, skill saws. They they weren't going to add in there.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, Jenny, do you have anybody online?
Um, no, no.
Okay, alright, then uh I'll take a motion, Bob, so adjourn the meeting.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
I I approve.
All papers, aye. Aye, we are done. Thank you.